Good evening. Welcome, everybody. This is the. Hello, hello, hello. It always works, except at home. Okay, do we have a quorum of the Finance Committee? I say one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Excellent, we have a quorum. My name is Peggy Briggs. I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee and I want to thank you, Perishar, for chairing last week's hearing, which was on the most of the Concord budget warrant articles. Tonight's article is, tonight's, I'm sorry, tonight's hearing is to review all the school budgets on the warrant, including the Regional High School, the Public School, and the Minuteman Regional Technical Vocational High School. After this hearing, the Finance Committee, next week, on March 15th, will be hearing from the town's enterprise funds, including the BD Fitness Center, the Light Plant, Water and Sewer, Peg, not me, by the way. That's. Okay, thank you very much for laughing. And the Town's Media Division. All the public hearing presentation materials and agendas for the Finance Committee public hearings are posted and available on the annual Town Meeting section of the Town's website, along with copies of the recordings of each public hearing. Finance Committee public hearings are also livestreamed on the Town's Minuteman Media Government website. After the Finance Committee closes the hearing, we will meet immediately after, in a regular session, to potentially vote on positions for the warrant articles we're hearing tonight, or to postpone our decision and ask for more information. Some other calendar reminders, don't forget the annual Town Election is on March 28th. For, we have contested election for the Select Board. We have candidates for the School Committee and also for the Housing Authority, which are not contested, and also the Town Moderator, which is not contested. Town Meeting, annual Town Meeting, will be on Sunday, April 30th, at the Concord-Carlisle High School. And also, we have recently learned the Planning Board has rescheduled their public hearing to 7 o'clock on Wednesday, March 29th. The ability for Concord Committees to meet virtually, which we have been enjoying for the last several years, will expire on March 31st, but we do believe the state legislature will extend that, at least for a year, which they did last year. So with that, I believe Dr. Dawson for Minuteman Regional Votec is up first. Dr. Dawson, welcome. Oh, thank you. A tiny bit of pincom. Anyone want to raise their hand to scribe? I think Kathy or Brian might be up. Oh, no, no hands are shooting into the air. Kathy, okay, yes.
Brian did it last time, so I'll take it.
Thank you, Kathy. We usually like to assign folks at home. So that's perfect. Thanks so much, Kathy. All right, Dr. Dawson.
I'm not Dr. Dawson. I'm Steve Ledoux. I'm the Concord Rep. to Minuteman School Committee. I'm currently the Vice Chair of the School Committee, Chair of the Finance Subcommittee, and Chair of the Faculty Negotiations Committee. And with me tonight is Dr. Kathleen Dawson, our Superintendent, and Nikki Andreid, our School Business Manager. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dawson, but I just wanted to mention one thing that, you know, as we've talked to you in the past, we've, because of the size of the school, we have lost our ability to have out-of-district students. And we've had a Subcommittee that's been investigating how we could attract new member towns. And that Subcommittee will make a presentation. We're inviting all, all the Finance Committees, Select Boards, and Town Managers of the District on May 20, on March 28th, which I know is Election Day here, for an evening meeting to, to hear our presentation about our proposed methodology of accepting new members. We do have a couple communities that are interested in joining, and we want to come up with a methodology that includes buying into the district, so to speak, financially. So there'll be more coming, but I just wanted to kind of throw that out there as a save your date at the moment. And with that, I turn it over to Dr. Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. Ledoux. Concord Finance Committee, thank you so much for this opportunity. And thank you, guests, for joining us. Again, greetings. I am the proud Superintendent of Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical School District, and please pardon the speed in which I'm going to go through the presentation so that we're not here all night, and then we can get to questions. So I will go rather quickly. We are here tonight to present the Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Recommendation for Minuteman, and at the end, we hope to be able to answer your questions. Our budget is grounded in improving teaching and learning for all our students. And of course, these are our school-wide goals for this year. Did I skip one? Sorry about that. Okay. Yes, sorry, Nikki, if you go back to that other one. So tonight, we present to you a budget that's focused on supporting our students and our staff. The budget supports our purpose of ensuring our students have highly qualified professionals and that our staff are equipped to provide relevant and rigorous learning opportunities with the most up-to-date technologies and curricula. This budget supports the academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs of our students so they can develop into their best selves. Our budget reflects our values and priorities, and those are our students and our staff. So as mentioned, here are our school-wide goals for this year. And to support us in accomplishing these goals, Minuteman's FY24 operating and capital budget request overall is up only 4.5% compared to our FY23 budget. Our district budget objectives follow along with our school priorities and goals. The top three objectives are the safety of our students and staff, the quality of education, and the professional development for our staff. Additional objectives include increasing access to what Minuteman has to offer by capitalizing how we use our facilities to its maximum capacity, capitalizing on the potential use and expansion of the athletic fields for the benefit of our students and communities, thus also increasing revenue potential. And lastly, successfully closing out our MSBA school building project, which we hope to do so later this fall. Some of the major drivers in our FY24 budget include the fact that we are currently undergoing contract negotiations with our teachers. Because of the increase in enrollment, there is a need for three new full-time teachers. Minuteman also participates in a health trust with four other regional vocational schools, and they have recommended that we carry a 10% increase at this point, as the final rates have not been finalized. And the impact of inflation on the prices of supplies and materials needed mainly for our CTE instruction required to meet industry standards. Additional drivers are the increase of costs for transportation and building utilities and heating, such as we all are experiencing. The increase of the OPEP contribution based on the recommendation of the OPEP Study Committee, the continued funding of our Capital Stabilization Fund, which will support some of the strategies for increasing our enrollment capacity. So just to break out the FY24 budget a bit more, Minuteman's operating expenses are up about 6.18%, and our operating capital, which includes our ESCO lease payment, the athletic field lighting debt, and capital stabilization funding is fairly consistent at 0.21%. The last year of our ESCO lease payment will be FY25. Minuteman's capital building project debt is slightly lower in FY24 than in '23, and this is an important breakout, as seven of our nine-member towns voted a death exclusion on the building school project. The total preliminary assessment for Concord, including the Building Project Debt Service that is excluded from Prop. 2.5, is approximately $1.64 million. The preliminary assessment for Concord without the building project debt is approximately $1.23 million. A major factor impacting the operating budget is our enrollment. With the plans for the new school building came the plans for increasing in-district student enrollment, and we are successfully accomplishing that. This freshman class this year was our first class all from our member town, so we're very proud that the students are from our member towns and having a great success. Enrollment from our member towns are increasing as the enrollment from the non-member towns are matriculating out with each graduating class. As enrollment shifts, Minuteman's out-of-district revenue is decreasing, both from tuition and capital fee, which is set by the state. And as a result, member towns are responsible for more of the costs than soon will be for all of the costs associated with operating and capital budget through their assessments. Here, we will show the comparison of changes in enrollment to the changes in revenue. The purple line across the top is our school-designed enrollment of 628 at 85% capacity. The tri-colored bar graph includes the total, the member and non-member enrollment compared to that 85% school capacity, as indicated by the purple line. And as the graph shows, we are over our 85% capacity mark. Here, the yellow line represents the non-member tuition, and the light blue line represents the capital fee revenue available to reduce member towns. And as you can see, these are trending in the opposite direction of increasing member enrollment. Here, we show the percent change in four-year rolling average of enrollment in the blue column, and with the percent change in assessment in the red for our member towns. For most of our member towns, these correspond, and to track together closely, they're spelled out in our regional agreement. It is important to note that the four-year rolling average will eventually even out over the next few years as enrollment becomes more typical of our full freshman classes of member-town students. For Concord, you can see there is a 10% increase in four-year rolling average, but a 9% increase in total assessment. You can see year-over-year here, the change in the component of the assessment. Minuteman does use the four-year rolling average of enrollment to determine assessments, as noted in the regional agreement. And as seen in the bar graph on the prior slide, Concord's four-year rolling average has increased by 10.2% compared to the total assessment increasing 8.8%. Despite the increasing in operating assessment, the per pupil assessment remains relatively consistent over the past five years. The current breakout for our Concord students currently, we have five seniors, five juniors, eight sophomores, and 18 freshmen. So as presented, it is the shifts in enrollment that are increasing assessments for each member town, and the increase is paying for more of our students to have access to a choice and the type and quality of career technical education. And as I've gone to each town and met with parents, the one common message from our families is that they truly appreciate your support in allowing them to have this choice. It is making a huge difference for them, and on behalf of the families, and of course, our students and staff, we want to thank you for that. This represents the preliminary FY24 assessments to all member towns. So where are we now for next year? The enrollment trends are continuing and going strong. The class of 2027 have all submitted their applications. They have received their award letters, and the acceptances and declines are coming in. So as of February, let me see, I think I have some new numbers as of today. I did bring those. So as of today, Concord, we are slotted 15 seats. We had 23 qualified applicants, meaning that they submitted all of the paperwork. And of that, there were 21 offers made. And as of right now, we only have two on the waitlist. 10 has already accepted, and we did have a number of students that declined. So we went from a total of 64 on the waitlist to 32 as of this morning. But Concord, we already have 10 that's accepted. Okay, it's very exciting. The increase in enrollment is requiring three additional full-time teachers. Being cautious of our budget and assessments' impact on our member towns, Minuteman is requesting funding for all the positions we need to provide the standard of service that will meet our expectations. But as you can see, we're only asking for the absolute minimum that we need. There are a number of other positions that we could absolutely use, but understanding that where we are in our economy, we absolutely need the three full-time. We will figure out how we're going to meet the other needs, as we always do. Teachers always go above and beyond every year, regardless of the budget. And we don't like to do that to our teachers, just because, you know, they work so hard, and especially after the pandemic, they're tired. But we do not want to put additional strain on our towns if we don't have to. And in that vein, we do not solely rely on our member towns to fund all the district's needs. We worked diligently to apply for and have been fortunate to receive grant funding. And as you can see, without these grants, it would have required the district to request from the member towns an additional $3 million for the FY23 budget. In essence, the grant funding saved the member towns over 10% this current year. So the district does use these grant funds for a number of purposes, including, you know, updating our curriculum for additional CTE programming for student programs, purchases of instructional equipment, and summer programming, just to name a few. Grant funding is starting to support our Minuteman Technical Institute in its full entirety. And as a reminder, our MTI is our post-secondary program. And next year, we will not be funding that program from Member Town assessments. Another way that we were able to reduce the FY24 budget request to 4.5% was in part due to a $500,000 capital skills grant that we received right before we were finalizing our budget. So we were really fortunate, and that will help us to purchase the heavy and larger equipment that we need as our animal science program continues to grow in its third year. So as previously shared, our enrollment has exceeded the building's capacity, and the plan is to meet this growth and look to expand as much as our facilities will allow, but without any additional debt. Couple of our strategies. Number one, it's to continue contributing a portion of the budget to fund the capital stabilization account. This will allow us to support the current and new projects. We do have one project right now that's underway, and that's our North Metal Fab shop. And that will allow us to grow our advanced manufacturing welding program and allow some of the heavy equipment to move into that building. And strategy number two, we're really looking to leverage our strategic partnerships and grants to utilize all of our facilities. We do have an east campus building that currently is not being used, but does need some renovations and such before it can be used. So we're looking to partnerships to see how we can get that funding. But as of right now, we are, there are no plans to come to member towns for additional funding to help with that. To provide more context on strategy number one, back in 2016, the School Committee established the capital stabilization account to be prepared for capital needs that may come up. And the balance of just $2.5 million is due to the strategic planning and funding. And the School Committee does vote prior to any use of these funds on each specific project. And within the FY24 budget, Minuteman is proposing continuous funding of $500,000 to this account. As the capital stabilization account is one of the major drivers of the FY24 budget, so is the School Committee's responsibility for maintaining the funding for OPEB liability, which is our post-employment benefit program. This requires a long-term strategy recommended by the OPEB Advisory Subcommittee, and currently, the fund balance is slightly over $500,000, and we will need to drastically increase our yearly contribution if we are to meet the liability amount of over $20 million. So here is that long-term strategy. The increase in future years is reasonable due to the fact that ESCO leasing that will end in FY25, that amount that we've been allocating for that payment will now be shifted toward the OPEB payment after the lease ends. So this total here, broken out between the active retire health insurance and the OPEB contribution, is shown here. Minuteman is also following the recommendation of adding $10,000 per new FTE to make sure that we're keeping up with these figures. So as we requested the three new positions, we're setting aside the $30,000 for those new positions. So as we start to bring the budget presentation to a close, this is a summary of our operating and capital budget and the breakouts, with a total operating and capital budget request increase of only 4.5%. And the operating and capital budget is supported mainly by member town assessments, but the non-assessment revenue, which does not come from member towns, offsets a portion of the overall budget. We are being conservative with our state aid estimates, and the main point to be made here is that Minuteman is losing almost $1.8 million, primarily from decreases in the out-of-district tuition and capital fee revenue discussed in earlier slides. This loss is being picked up by our member towns. We do know, as we all know, that the governor did put out her proposed budget. And there is a slight difference between what we estimated for our Chapter 78 and what's being proposed. We are being very careful, though, because as we know, that budget is not final, and it goes through a number of cuts before it is. So one thing that we will be discussing at our next School Committee meeting is that, once that budget is finalized, should there be any difference between our estimate and what we end up actually receiving? That, that difference be reimbursed back to our member towns? So these are the components of the assessments that will be included in our budget book, as you are familiar with. And lastly, our overall budget request in comparison to FY23 is less than the prior year's requests in all categories. And in closing, we just return back to our why, which is our students and our staff and their teaching and learning. So we just want to thank you so much for your support over the years and for future years, and we are very proud to offer this option for your families. So we'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the Finance Committee?
Hey, Dr. Dawson, thank you very much. That was helpful. First question is the the 4.5 versus 6.18, the, the difference, is that a sustainable difference? Is that something that, that will repeat, or will that 1.68% come into next year's budget?
So, you know, one of the main drivers, as Dr. Dawson mentioned, was the, the three new teachers. So that would be a, a cost that would remain, as well as our teacher negotiation. But we are seeing a slight decrease in the debt payments for the MSBA project. So we do anticipate that being a small offset to the operating.
Right, so, okay, so the, and then the OPEB, what, what do you say is the source of the OPEB payments in the future?
The ESCO lease, which is our energy-saving project, lease from our prior building. That is paid by all of the member towns and part of the 16 member towns that were part of the district. And so that will be ending in FY25. And the OPEB Study Committee, which was put together, recommended to the School Committee that, at that point, the, it would be the best interest of Minuteman to allocate those payments towards OPEB to be able to catch up on the liability.
Right, okay, so that's under control. Thanks. And, and how many total staff do you have today?
Because 144.
Yep, 144.
Thank you.
We're, we're counting numbers today, so I want to make sure I have the right number.
Thank you.
Well, hello. The.
Yes.
I think you're calling on me, yes. Just a couple of questions. So on the the secondary program, or the, the postgraduate program, so my recollection is there was an intent to create revenue out of that program, and that was part of what the other, I think, adding the animal program. There was some, there was some thought that some of that would help, I think, as well. Am I wrong on that?
So the Animal Science Program is part of our regular, right? So the way that we're able to fund our post-secondary program is, yes, we have programs, it's tuition-paying, right? So there, that's funding itself. But we've been very fortunate of late to receive some major grants that's allowing us to offer programs for qualifying students for tuition-free, as well as continuing to add additional programs. But the plan is to continue to grow our tuition-paying programs so that it will be self-sufficient, and we do not have to fund it from our.
Right, yeah. Is it going to make a profit? Is it going to be a profit? Will it be a further offset besides being neutral?
We're not there yet, to be able to say that, but that is our aim.
Okay, same thing with the fields, right? So there was a desire, part of the plan for the fields was to be able to generate rental revenue. Are the fields done? Are they still being worked on?
So Phase 1 of the field project is complete, and we are generating some revenue. In all transparency, we have not been able to generate the level of revenue that was projected at the time of the presentation, and in part due to COVID, of course. And then that is starting to pick up. And what we're looking to do to finish the project with Phase 2, there was an RFP that was put out, and we have a partner that has submitted a proposal to actually pay for the build-out of the rest of the athletic complex, which is a hefty bill. But in part of that agreement would be that they'd be leasing the athletic facilities from us in a nominal, for a nominal amount, until they, of course, get their return on investment, which will mean that the time for Minuteman to get the level of revenue that we can get will be delayed a bit until the project is done, and that lease agreement is complete. So that is a discussion, it's not been finalized, but that is a discussion that will be happening with the School Committee on Tuesday. But long-term, when you think about finishing the project without going back to our member towns to ask to foot that bill, and to provide a full athletic complex, that one that lease agreement is done, the potential for bringing in revenue, the hope is that that will, of course, increase. It just won't happen. It'll just be delayed a little bit, because the lease agreement initially would start at a 10-year lease with the option of two additional five-year increments. So that's a conversation we're having with the School Committee on Tuesday.
So the revenue deferral could be 10 years plus?
There would be some revenue still coming in, but the the amount of revenue that was projected back at the time, we're not there yet, and we're not there yet with just the athletic field we currently have.
How much of a deficit do you have, so versus what you thought you were going to get and what you're getting now? What's the, the delta?
You know what, they're actually working on those numbers right now that we'll be presenting to the School Committee Tuesday.
The addition, the new programs that require FTE, so I remember us talking about that last year. So I thought we had added people last year for those new programs. Am I wrong? Is it, have they been very successful so that you're getting a lot of students in them? Why do you need additional headcount?
So the new program that started with our animal science and all of our career tech programs require a minimum of two teachers. And so we have one teacher for, you know, the first two grades. Now that we're adding on a third grade, we will need another teacher. And so that's the animal science position that we're asking for, yes. And then the engineering program, it's growing, and the increase in number of students, we need additional. And then the math teacher, when we took a look at our data, how our students are performing, we need some additional support in that area, and that's why we are asking for the math position.
On the membership side, so I understand the comment that there's a forum coming up, but, but so far this year, no, no new members and no one leaving?
No members leaving, and please understand that, you know, this is very preliminary conversation, and it is a process, and that's why we're starting. Because if timing was perfect and everything worked out, it wouldn't be for another two years before a new member could actually send a student. And that's if all of the stars aligned and that, that Town Meetings happened, because, and it has to be a unanimous vote, every member, each of our nine members will have to say yes in order for it to happen. But what we want to do, knowing that, you know, part of it was, build a new school and they'll come, they did. But guess what? Other towns, other districts are building new schools. And so we want to be, or we're thinking and being prepared that, you know, when that happens, what are, are we ready for that? What are we ready for any changes in enrollment shifts? You know, as, as we're looking at the trend of, starting to look at the trend of our kids, and where are they, and, you know, where they're going. So we just want to be prepared, and we want our towns to be informed that these are the options that you have. And here are some recommendations about possible buy-in options. And, and we spent a lot of time and a lot of creating, doing some financial modeling and different things to try to figure a consistent, but also a fair way to move forward. So that's the discussion that we'll be starting.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like NCAA football conference rivalries here. Governor Baker.
I'm a dancer, so I don't know how that works. Okay.
I had a question, and maybe you can help us think about it, and then maybe you've shared the numbers. But I'm just kind of curious, what's the overall growth rate in the actual cost for the district fiscal year '23 to '24? Operating, and then how to think about the Concord share increase rate and disentangling how much is due to. And disentangling how much is due to growth in student enrollment versus what what would happen if you kept Concord student enrollment constant? What I'm trying to understand is how much of our increase is being driven by an increase in Concord students going there versus just the overall increase in the underlying cost structure? Does that question make sense?
So this slide should help. It's the comparison of Concord from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-three, so a two-year comparison. Our operating budget is broken out by the minimum required contribution, which is is set by the state, as you know, transportation and our remaining operating costs. Majority of that is is driven by the four-year rolling average. So as you can see, the the assessment increase is very strongly correlated to that four-year rolling average. Our debt and capital has a slightly different calculation. It is based fifty percent on enrollment, the four-year rolling average. We have forty-one percent of a yield based on each town. And then each town is also divided up and they get a one percent share. So overall, you'll see slight variations from the enrollment, but for the most part, our assessments are are very strongly aligned with the four-year rolling average.
So just for somebody naive like me, the minimum required contribution, what does that represent? And how is it different than operating expenses?
So those three lines, the minimum required contribution, the transportation and the operating, if you added those three up, it would it would total your operating budget. We do break it out because the member required contribution is set by the state. So it's just going to show you that there is, you know, a portion of your increase that is 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 set by the state. I mean, and the remaining comes into those other two buckets.
Okay, so really all three are just operating.
Exactly, yep.
And so in essence, it sounds as if the third line operating is almost a residual based on the fact you've got statement. Okay, perfect. So that helps explain the twenty-two percent cost increase. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. I'm going to shift gears a little bit. And if I understand correctly, you have six hundred and twenty-eight students. Is that your maximum?
So, no, that's eighty-five percent capacity of the building.
Okay.
So that when we extrapolated that out, a hundred percent capacity would be seven hundred and twenty students. And that's how we determined the hundred and eighty class size for each grade. So we did round that up a little bit because historically what we're seeing is about a five percent attrition rate over the years. And so we, you know, offer about hundred and eighty-nine, we accept about hundred and eighty-nine students per grade. We're starting to so this will be our second year that we will have a full freshman class from member towns, yeah.
Okay, so along that line, the last couple of years, we've heard about the renovating of a building that's now an additional building on campus. And I'm wondering, is this just for an expansion of programs or would it allow you to have more students? How would that work?
So the the what we call the north building for it will allow about four additional students per grade in the welding program by moving the heavy welding equipment to that north building. So it does allow, yes.
And do you have any timeframe or do you know what the timeframe is in terms of the renovation?
So the timeframe has been delayed a bit. And so we're putting together a different plan to try to have the building finished and our equipment moved in for the opening of next school year.
Next school year, okay.
Yes.
Do you have any other buildings that you can renovate?
Yes. So I did mention, we do have the east campus building. And so initially, we were hoping that the animal science program could go there with a strategic partnership that didn't go through, but we're looking in other ways to renovate that building to be able to move some of our programs there that would free up more classroom space in the main building. It could potentially allow us to accept more students. And if we did that, our estimated number, like we could probably create about four additional classrooms if we keep the footprint of that building the same and we just renovated. We could probably get four. And if we average twenty students, then we could probably get an additional eighty more. And then that we could potentially increase our enrollment to eight hundred. So that's, you know, very early preliminary looking what's possible.
So that's my last question, except for do you have any kind of timeframe in terms of the north building and the east building?
So the north building
That's going to be next year.
For in the fall, you know, we hope to move, that's our plan.
Yep.
The east building, not quite yet. Ideally, it would be great if we could knock the whole building down and build a brand-new building and a little bit bigger footprint. But then again, you're looking at more funds. And I already said, we will not be coming to member towns for that funding. So it's a matter of some strategic partners. So, you know, when you think about how we're trying to grow as a district and innovation and technology, can we partner with some industry partners that could help us to to do that?
Good, thank you very much.
Yeah, to to clip on some a great to see that Concord's enrollment is increasing by nine percent. Is the overall enrollment also increasing by a comparable number? Yeah.
Yes, across all of our member towns.
Yeah.
The number of applications have gone up.
Yeah.
And so it's the hard part is going to be when we have to say no because you know, the seats are taken.
Right.
Yes, and we'll have, we'll get those numbers. We're just finalized because we're just wrapping up. You know, March eighth actually was deadline for the initial offers
Yep.
to be either accepted or declined. So we'll we'll have some more updates.
And is the is the overall budget built on a assumption of more students in total? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And then I'd love the sound of strategic partnerships. I'm sure we'd all love to hear the details. Do we have any in place already or is perspective?
For our east campus, not yet. And when it's time and when we're ready, then we'll definitely share. But it's very early, right? Because I've this is only my ninth month
Yeah.
on the job. And so the first strategic partner that we actually were looking for was the athletic complex to finish that.
Yep.
So but as far as the east campus, not yet.
Yeah, okay.
But it's starting.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. The number in your presentation, the Concord assessment, is a little bit different than what's in the in the warrant. I know these things can change as things come into focus. Is that the is that the final number?
That is, yeah. It may be off very slightly due to Acton having a few school choice students, so that lowered everyone's assessment, maybe a few thousand dollars. But I can certainly take a look at the warrant and give you the final number, but the number in our presentation is the final one.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the finance committee online or in the room? From the audience? Mr. Johnson?
Matthew Johnson, twenty-one Withers Street, member of the SLIF board, speaking on my own behalf. Of the rolling average approach for the assessments for Concord tends to kind of lag the growth rate. And so I it I think is hiding what our actual expense eventually will be. In other words, assuming things level out now, that the assessment is going to catch up to where our enrollment is on. Can can you describe a little bit what we should be expecting in future years? Just with an assumption that that our enrollments stay at the present level?
Yeah, so your the number of seniors that Concord has is five students, juniors, five students, sophomores, eight students, and freshmen, eighteen students. So you will see, Dr. Dawson mentioned, you've already, we already accepted ten eighth graders that will go into the freshman class. So we can certainly do a calculation and provide you estimated increases based on applications. But I believe in the next two years, because you're dropping off smaller classes in the junior and senior class, that there will be a bit more of an increase in the next two years. Until, again, that that levels out more, it's pretty astounding that eighteen students for the freshman class, I think, is is a big driver in the the increase in students and the increase in enrollment.
Okay, thank you. I think you you need to be mindful about those future years.
Thank you, Matt. Good point. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. And on behalf of, again, we're just so appreciative of your support. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, we are going to move on to Article sixteen, which is the regional high school budget.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Morano, and I'm the chair of the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee and a member of the Concord School Committee. So tonight you'll be hearing from both Dr. Hunter and Assistant Superintendent Bob Conry. Tonight is Bob's first public hearing with us in Concord. Bob was hired just under a year ago as Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. Mr. Conry comes to us from Berlin-Boylston School District, where he was also the Director of Finance of an Operations. We're fortunate that Bob has had seven years of running the finance office in a regional district much like ours. Bob also has an extensive private sector experience, so the lens through which he views finance and operations is varied and diverse. I think you'll see this evening that the experience he brings to us is of great benefit to our towns. What you'll also see tonight is a budget that represents our mission and our district goals and meets the needs of all of our students.
Mike, advancing the slides myself here.
Oh, Chris is doing it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tracy, and and FinCom members as well. Thank you for the opportunity to present. We have previously, you know, been in contact with FinCom and been presented with the guideline, the information we're presenting tonight, as you know, and we've communicated previously is in alignment with the guideline to the regional district. So the information we're sending here is a summary of hopefully what you've seen before. And so we've presented this in kind of a format that I've understood to be traditional. Certainly welcome feedback if there's information that you'd like to see or have seen before. But going for just to start off with at a high level, this is the motion that we would written and would present to town meeting. Looking at the budget, we have a high-level view of the budget just from an operating expense perspective and what Concord's assessment is. It's a three point four eight percent operating budget increase. The assessment impact to the town of Concord is one point five eight percent, I believe that is. And we'll see those numbers on the next slides. What's driving the difference between the the operating budget increase and the assessment increase is the fact that there's a little bit of a shift in students from Concord to Carlisle, the proportionate share of students at the high school. Next slide, please. So at a kind of a top-level view of the school, you can see that we have a three point six percent increase in the salaries component of our budget and a three point two percent increase in the non-salary component and an overall increase of three point five percent, which is one million, two hundred sixty-nine, seven, nine seventeen over last year. Next slide, please. So the key drivers of the increase, and this is just the salary accounts, are the CCTA salaries. The increase is dollar-wise is seven hundred and sixty-four thousand approximately and a four point eight percent increase. The cost of living increase in the contract was two point seven five percent. We had very little in the way of retirements. And so that what brought it from two point seven five to four point eight is steps and lanes that teachers advanced either through experience for a lane or steps for years of working an additional year. And again, typically, we would see, I think we've we've seen some teachers retire through the pandemic. And so in a in a average year, you might see that number be lower where some of those retirements have happened the last couple of years during the pandemic. There wasn't many teachers at all that retired that are reflected in this budget. So that's why the the four point eight percent is is a little bit higher than I would say is typical. For non-teacher salaries, that represents positions like special ed tutors, assistants, administration in the building, and the increase there is two hundred forty-four thousand, eight twenty-seven, three point six percent. Most of that's contractual cost of living increases. And there are a a couple of increases, I believe, to supports needed in specialized programs at the high school. Mindful of the guideline and and us wanting to kind of attain guideline, we did take a reduction in our professional contingency. We have a contingency for unanticipated costs that might arise. It's previously at a hundred fifty thousand, we brought it down to ten thousand. The reason we have a contingency is our budgets are zero-based. We build our budgets every year clean based on what the needs are identified in the buildings from supplies to technology to staffing. And we felt comfortable taking the contingency to get to guideline this year based on reserves that we had in other places longer term, such as circuit breaker carryover. Retirement incentive payments is 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 an incentive plan that we had for our staff previously. It's not currently being offered. This will wind down eventually to zero over the next couple of years. This year, the decrease is thirty-seven thousand, approximately thirty-five percent. So these are the main drivers of our of our salary account budget drivers, about eight hundred and thirty-two thousand. Next slide, please. Insurance includes, it's primarily benefits, it does include commercial insurance, which is just a small component of this for property casualty liability. We received information from the Minuteman Health Network. Preliminary indication, we budgeted a nine percent increase. We've also saw a significant increase in participation in our healthcare plans over the summer into the year. And so part of this increase is driven by the increased rates at Minuteman and the other parts driven by increased participation. The Concord retirement assessment is basically stipulated to us by the Concord Retirement Board. It's for non-teachers, non-MTRS staff. So include people like our facilities, teams, custodians, include food service department, all the special ed tutors and assistants and administration, administrative positions. That's a significant significant increase longer term, when there's, when the program's fully funded, I think there's a component of this where the catch-up goes away. Catch-up provision, part of the assessment goes away. But this year, this is significant impact to the regional district. On the flip side, kind of offsets to those increases are debt service, which is essentially a level principal payment for most of the bonds that we have. So that's going to de continue to decrease over time. And our transportation vehicle replacement, we had some needs five years back where we had kind of more than a typical purchase of of vehicles. And some of those vehicles are coming off lease. So we have some savings on that and we're now at what we would view as a steady state going forward for vehicles. So the drivers on the non-salary side are three hundred thirty-five thousand, these kind of the key components driving the non-salary side. Next slide, please, Chris. So the excess and deficiency is our version of free cash in a regional school. So the excess and deficiency is our version of free cash in a regional school district. And this summarizes where we started the year and where we anticipate, where we started FY twenty-one, where we anticipated ending in FY twenty-two. This is in the process of being signed off by DLS. And so we were basically able to hold steady. In our FY twenty-four budget, we're planning to use three hundred thousand dollars again. We have a cap on excess and deficiency stipulated by state law of five percent. So we're close to the cap. We'd like to stay in the range of where we are, close to the cap, but not to the point where we're worrying about going over it. So you can see we have a fairly healthy balance there, and we are using three hundred thousand dollars to help subsidize our operating budget as we feel is appropriate right now. Next slide, please. So our OPEB position is outlined here. Relative to most communities and regional districts, we're in a pretty healthy position. There were some investment losses experienced in FY twenty-two, which are the reason for the decrease from forty percent to thirty-nine percent. The valuation there is is draft and preliminary. And we are making an annual contribution of five hundred and fifty thousand. So we feel like we're in a healthy position there, and we plan to continue to fund it at the level of funding it now and the near term. And over time, we anticipate being able to reduce that contribution. Next slide, please. So Esther funds update, people are aware that there's an end date, an expiration. This is intended to show you where we are now, where we will be by the end of the year and what's left to help. You know, we're using the, and also on the next slide, we're talking about how we're using these funds. But so as you can see, Esther one and Esther two have been fully expended or will be fully extended by the end of this year, and we're not planning to use any of those funds next year. ARPA IDA is really just for special education costs. It's an extension of Esther two that will be spent down by the end of this year. And Esther three, we have factored into covering one, some costs next year for one position at the regional high school. That grant expires September thirty, two thousand twenty-four. For practical purposes, we're going to be spending it by the end of June, two thousand twenty-four to fund a specific position, a specialized position in our language-based program. So at the end of FY twenty-four, we're not anticipating to have any Esther funds left. Next slide, please. And so we just wanted to share how we were using Esther funds. We have a small offset to some summer school costs for programs that we currently run. That serves as a budget offset. Although we sometimes will see needs that are beyond what we we would budget for or anticipate. And the language-based special education program position is a reading specialist. You know, these were intentionally planned as to be used over two years to kind of mitigate having a fiscal cliff. So these are being spent over two years, FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four. Next slide, please. So to summarize our assessments, the two views, we've been asked to present, wanted to show, we're at the top without debt included, essentially kind of just the core operations budget. And at the bottom, it includes the debt service. So you can see the two combined. Our, our assessment increases to Concord without debt are two point three nine percent. With the debt factored in, they're at one point five eight percent, three hundred ninety-five thousand dollar four hundred ninety dollar increase. And you can see the impact to Carlisle is significant, something they did anticipate. And we're certainly have been in communication with them. And I understand that in prior years, Concord felt some of the opposite effect. So this is a year where the student shift is dollar wise benefiting Concord in terms of the assessment. Next slide, please. And so this is just a recap, be in the kind of town meeting format, what we'd be presenting to the town at town meeting with a breakout of what the budget is and the assessment is just specifically for Concord. And at the bottom, we have the the assessment for debt. So I'm going to pause there. We welcome any questions, if anybody has any about the regional budget.
I have one question, which I'll just start with. The Esther three staff position slide. Is that going to be a permanent position? Are we going to come back to ask us, ask for funding to keep that position when Esther funding goes away?
We would anticipate in FY twenty-five that that would be a position we would want to fund and we would need to fund in the operating budget.
Thank you. Anyone else on the committee?
Yep, um, thanks Bob for the presentation. Can we go back to slide three for a minute? Just help educate me. So the contingency, a hundred and forty thousand, you said there's ten thousand left? Is that right? There's a hundred and fifty. Can you just go over? What does that contingency represent?
So if we have, for example, a a student that moves into town that needs one-to-one support from a tutor that we don't, it is, it is.
And right now, the balance is a hundred and fifty, you said?
It was, and now it's
And if this goes forward, it would be down to ten.
Correct.
And so how does that get replenished?
It, it doesn't.
It doesn't. So next fiscal year twenty-five, we would bake in a hundred and forty thousand into the operating budget.
Not necessarily. I mean, we're
That's, I hope you understand, kind of, because let me just make sure my simple mind gets this. Seven sixty-four plus two forty-four is basically nine, a million dollar increase. You're suggesting a hundred and seventy of it is really mitigated by those two second lines. But there's a million dollar cost structure increase, right? Am I missing that or no?
No, no.
So then next year, if you don't have another hundred and forty in contingency, it's only ten.
Right, the CCTA salaries, you have to remember, don't have any, we have very, very one retirement. So the retirements that you would typically have in a given year with the number of staff we have would yield savings. With the pandemic, a lot of those people retired that were of retirement age decided to make that decision, retired during the pandemic.
Yep.
This year, we haven't received communication of of retirement. So what would typically bring down our CCTA salaries to a kind of a more moderate number is staff retiring. So that's an element that this year you might not see in another year.
But but absent that, you'd still need a million dollars the following year. Because these are base salaries, right?
With steps and lanes, but not any retirements, which
I understand, but absent the retirement.
Yeah.
I understand that, but I'm trying to understand the one forty. Like, if you take the reserves of one forty using this year, you don't have any left here. And you're still expected to pay out a million dollars in salaries. Where is baking it in? The budget driver would be a million, not eight twenty-three. That's what I'm trying to understand. Am I missing something?
They get, they retain E and D, right? So they have
replenish the contingents.
So I was, if if we're concerned about, I would say I'm not too concerned right now about about replenishing it.
Okay.
Because we have, oh, we also have circuit breaker reserves, which are not in the general fund. And so, you know, to the extent that we had some surprise costs, we could access that. If we were in a year where we're coming to you with a two percent increase next year, we would want to replenish the reserves, the contingency. If we, if we, you know, so we would think selectively about ways to replenish the contingency, but not do so if it didn't make sense fiscally to the town. It would, we also have, you know, but that circuit breaker serves as a safety net that we also have aside from the contingency.
And and then that person read about E and D on slide six or seven. The max is five percent, right? We're not, is there a minimum threshold?
It can't be, it shouldn't be less than zero, but yeah, yeah, but no.
So we received a Moody's warning when we were under three percent. You really want to be between four and five.
Okay, but three, we got a warning.
Under three, we got a warning. We've worked really hard to rebuild it to that four point six.
So theoretically, you can use some of this, advise you're not going below four, maybe three and a half.
Right, so you'll know, we're already using three hundred thousand dollars in revenue.
I'm sure, but you've got three hundred thousand max, so the balance will stay the same. So if you have to, you can take out
Best practice is is not at the four, but between four and five.
I understand, but we're we're in the same situation with free cash. So try to understand the range. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, hi. Thanks, Bob, for that. That's very helpful. Following up on Parrish's comment, the the largest number on that slide three had to do with the teacher salaries and that that's being renegotiated, right? So do you think if we just, you know, thinking about next year, rather than thinking of a million dollar potential increase, it's going to be more potentially, since two point seven five percent contractually is is for this year is ending, right? And there's no contractual number for next year?
Into twenty, FY twenty-four is two point seven five.
Right, right. If I meant that, I'm sorry, for this budget, for twenty-five's budget, will it be the product of a new negotiation that's negotiated?
We'll be negotiating next year. The contract ends June of twenty-four, so yes.
Yes, okay. So so I think for FinCom, it's it's good for us to be mindful that that number is unlikely to go up by only two point seven five in the future, given that that contract was negotiated with, when inflation was much lower than it is today. It's just something to be be thinking about. My my actual question, though, had more to do with poor Carlisle. I, if someone had asked me, did I ever? But did I ever imagine that, you know, that one town could face a nine percent increase in if CCHS, I would have said, you know, no, it's not going to happen that that way. Putting our, you know, ourselves in their shoes, could that happen to us? And so if we know the enrollment of the middle schools at the two towns, do we know what to expect in terms of our our share going forward? Presumably, it's an easy
We have tenure projections we can send you. They're as good as the number of kids in the seats. As of today, we continually look at K eight at both those districts.
And what what do we, what do we know?
A little bit more swing to Carlisle next year, actually. And then it starts to level off, and we don't see huge dramatic swings like this coming, but whenever, they're they're projections. So it's hard to be sure they're going to hold. But we don't see another nine percent imminent.
Yeah, predictions are difficult, especially when they're about the future. I think you'll be very
A change, a change of ten students too in Carlisle is a lot different than a change of ten students in Concord, just because of the size of both towns and student enrollment. So it's disproportionately impacting them when there is that type of change.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Chris.
Thank you. Hi, Bob. Thanks for the presentation. A couple of questions. So I assume that the Carlisle FinCom is okay with where they are?
Well, they're trying to be. That's a, that's the biggest increase they've ever had.
Yeah.
High school budget.
Do they have a guideline process like we do? So is there
It's really hard for them. They've got to follow suit here to some extent. It's hard for them to push back. They're really working hard to meet what we brought to them. And we're working as closely with them as possible.
Okay. Bob, what is circuit breaker?
It's
No, no, what, I'm sorry, what is the amount?
Oh. The reimbursement this year would be a million, two seventy-six. The the balance, that and that's what we would anticipate carrying over to next year.
So you'll, you'll have about one point
We would, we would try to carry over the full amount, absent any surprises.
Okay. And how to be, how are the revolvers looking? So athletics and lunch, are those? They were more than fully funded.
Lunch is, lunch is healthy, and we're going to actually hear at a school committee meeting from our food service director, interim director. They're having a very good year participation wise. That helps, and and the free lunches from the state has helped. So we're hoping to at least stay steady this year. In prior years, we've had to subsidize the food service program. The athletics, I anticipate, would be spent down a little bit. There is a reserve there, but you know, we've had some some needs that we've had to address. So I think that this still be, still have a healthy balance, but and the other funds, there's not a lot of other accessible funds at the region that we would have accessible to us.
Okay. Dr. Hunter, I saw in a recent school committee meeting that you're going to be adding a new dean of students, so they have the title properly, or you're thinking about it. I'm not sure if it's a done deal at the high school. Can you speak to that and what the costs, how the costs would be dealt with?
Yeah, we're going to need to reallocate. We didn't ask for that, and we know we had the need at the time through the needs of the kids this year, which you'll hear about at the CPS level, too. We've decided we need another administrator. We're running the same amount of administrators at the high school as we are at the middle school with twice the number of kids, and it's finally caught up with us. So my ask to the school committee was permission to reallocate as we get ready to get into the July first process and open this budget up. So there'll be no new ask. We're going to have to give up something to do it, most likely unless we pick up a few retirements and take the edge off. But there's no question, we have a need of more service to kids at the administrative level.
What would the size of the reallocation be?
I don't have a salary set yet. It's a hundred thousand-ish, a little plus of that.
Okay. Bob, you mentioned on the retirement assessment that at some point, the catch-up is going to disappear. When's that going to be?
I I would have to follow up with the retirement board, but I I was a little surprised by going up so much, or staffing didn't change that much.
Right.
And I know it's near fully funded. So that's something I can get more information on and email you about.
Well, interest rates will be a driver there as well, right? So that can be what what changed it to, right? They're projecting future, you know, obligation. So that might be it, but, okay. I think that was all for me. Thank you.
Anyone else on the committee here in the room?
Just a quick question. If you were to take the E and D, E and D account down to four percent, how much in additional funds would that generate? Approximately?
We have to call the slide up to do the math. One percent of one six seven two is a hundred sixty thousand, point six of that, say approximately a hundred thousand. That's off the top of my head.
Anyone online from the committee? Anyone in the room? Dean. Name and address?
Dean Danfield, seventy-three Walden Terrace. Mr. Cupcub pointed out that Carlisle will suffer this year due to a small shift in students. One thing that's been on the discussion list for years has been moving to something that the regional school is doing, which is a a moving average, which smooths that out. Is there any progress in that?
Oh, I got that one. In my first couple of years, a number of years ago, we at least had a discussion of, at the school committee level, of whether there was interest in looking at the agreement. At the time, there was no interest at all from Carlisle. I don't know that we really fought, thought we had interest here. That would be up to the regional school committee if they want to have that discussion. It obviously includes both towns. But there, there was very little interest, and we frankly retreated quite quickly because it was becoming a negative conversation very, very fast.
Thank you.
That, I I can just report that subject has been on the various agendas for over twenty years. And the, whichever town is getting the favorable treatment doesn't want to discuss it, and the other town does, and it just keeps going back and forth like that.
That's what I was going to say. The reason why that happened was because we had a spike in our number. I imagine now that they've had a spike in theirs, they may be more open to that conversation.
They, they tend to get higher spikes and 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 better dips, just because it's a, you know, smaller part of the town budget. So town, I mean, the region. Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Dean.
Peggy, before we leave the region, I just want to comment on the homeless shelter, because it's both districts that are going to be impacted. I got numbers today from the state. We have, and I don't have, like, really just got them. So I don't have the breakout specifically, but I think about half of these will be regionally impacted. There are thirty one school age children being placed in the shelter on Monday. I am under direct watch from Desi to have these kids in school by Friday. So twenty two of those need transportation to their school of origin. And I'm cautioning everyone in the room of the, the costs associated with that. The others will enroll in our classrooms. The state is being, the, the governor's proposed a healthy package to that. It's now in the senate. I think we are probable to get some, about eighteen thousand dollars per child annually who enrolls at some sort of rolling process. However, the transportation while it's being discussed is fully funded, it's a, it's a reimbursement. So we, we may, we're going to need to front these funds. Salem and talking to them, they've had the shelter open at more capacity, but since December, December to February, they incurred four hundred thousand dollars in transportation costs to school of origin. So our level of, our level of unpredictability is getting a little more predictable and it's you know, unexpected ways. This was based on a discussion where they were going to only place three to five days initially and two weeks ago that completely changed and now there's twenty five families going in on Monday. Devon, Devon's is closing and they're moving them here, so.
So Lori, you said there are thirty one kids moving in. Twenty one need transportation to their school of origin. That means eleven are going to be enrolled in the Concord School?
Well, it's hard to say exactly. Twenty two of them on the list I got are asking to go back to their school of origin and I don't have the regional versus local breakout, but we're all here to talk about both budgets, so. Right now on paper, we won't know till we actually meet the families next week. Right now, nine of them are looking to enroll. Many of them Haitian Creole migrants new to the country. A Turkish refugee family after the earthquake. So there's gonna be a variety of needs here, clearly. Those are, those may pop EL needs in our schools because those kids need services, so. We're, we're in a little bit of uncharted territory here that could change daily and I just think it was important to put that out at both budgets, but we'll, we'll have a conversation while we're on the region.
Lori, thanks for the detail. I'm curious, when we say transportation, is that school employees and drivers or private taxes?
Well, that's whatever way we can get them there. So McKinney Vento is legislation that requires provision to get them to their school of origin. We cost share it with the district that they're going back to at a fifty percent level. It doesn't matter how you get them there, you just have to get them there. So many times it ends up being vans in small settings because it's very unique needs and individual schools. We do seem to have a group of, a, a, a lot of these families are coming through the ER, ERs in Boston and the hospitals are housing them for hours and then the state's trying to get them to someplace as quickly as possible. So it does look like there's a good number of kids who are, are in school in Boston. That sounds simpler than it might have, but they're not all in the same school and it's all over the city, so we're going to have to take this one child at a time.
And they just bill us. They send us a bill and you've got to pay like an invoice, is that the way?
We will have to directly pay to the transportation provider, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And with that, why don't we move on to Article seventeen, the Concord Public Schools.
Hi, everybody. My name is Alexa Anderson. I'm the chair of the Concord Public School System. So thank you to the finance committee for this evening and thank you specifically to Parrishar and to Peggy who indulged me with a few minutes that I wanted to take with you all before I hand the torch to Dr. Hunter to give our presentation on Article seventeen, which is the Concord Public School Budget. So tonight you will see a presentation for a level service budget. Level service means that we are proposing in this budget that we will deliver the same level of programs and services to our kids next year that we did this year. So things you won't see, anything new and exciting. But you also won't see programs and services go away either. I think the most important thing to know about the Concord Public School Budget is that eighty five percent of it is dedicated to the salaries of our educators and staff. These are legally binding contracts that are negotiated by the school committee about every three years. So that leaves us with fifteen percent for everything else. So I wanted to highlight three quick things in the everything else category that I think illustrate why the budget was particularly challenging to put together this year. I'll start with special education. Our most vulnerable students sometimes need services above and beyond what our district can provide. And in that case, we have a really small population of students that go and who are educated in private school settings and we are obligated by law to pay for their tuitions, a portion of which is reimbursed by the state of Massachusetts and their budget. So this year, the state of Massachusetts authorized these private schools to increase their tuitions up to fourteen percent. So I just want to make everyone know, a big piece of what you're going to see tonight is reflective of that fourteen percent increase. I think the amount in real dollars that you'll see against that line item in the budget is about a hundred and thirty five thousand. Moving on, next thing. It's March, but it still feels like winter. It still looks like winter, so we all know the rising costs of energy, they're, it's all present in our own homes. You're going to see that in our budget as well. I think we will see, if I'm remembering, you're going to see a hundred and eight thousand dollars increase in our fiscal twenty four budget that reflects those rising utility rates. And finally, inflation's hovering still around a hun, around eight percent. School system's not immune to that. You'll notice in our supplies and materials line item, an additional two hundred and eight thousand dollars. And when I talk about supplies and materials here, I'm not talking about scissors and pencils and blues and crayons. Any parent looking around in this audience that is in our district knows that about five years ago, those types of items were removed from our operating budget and passed along to parents who now pay for those things on an annual basis for their students. So supplies and materials in this instance is more like computer hardware parts to, you know, keep our buses operational and maintained. So when you add up those three increases, those three line items, we're talking about almost a half a million dollars in costs. The finance committee thus far has recommended that our budget increase about three point three percent. Tonight, you're going to see in Dr. Hunter's presentation, a budget that asks for a four point seven percent increase. Because really, four point seven percent is what's required to deliver next year what we delivered this year, especially in light of all of these extraordinary market conditions. In real dollars, that's about five hundred and eighty five thousand dollars, that difference. So again, when you add up just these three line items, that's almost all of it. And we are talking about those three line items, they're basic needs. Really basic needs, maybe the most basic of needs. We're talking about the ability to educate our most vulnerable students in the settings that they belong. The ability to heat our buildings. And then the ability to like maintain our buses so they're operational so that kids can get to school. I just don't think needs get more basic than that. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Hunter. I know everyone's familiar with Dr. Hunter. She joined our district in two thousand seventeen. Worthy of note, she has consistently brought us pretty reasonable budgets that generally hover around the two to three percent range. This is an outlier. She's been with us through the pandemic and she has, I don't know, she's earned the trust of her colleagues and parents alike, so.
Thank you. So this is a high level version. This budget's been presented many times now and are really great and I appreciate the finance committee's time a few weeks ago at a more deeper dive, especially into the reasons behind the asks this year. So this is meant purposely to be higher level and we're happy to answer questions as we go. So this, this is where we're at. We're bringing a budget that was voted actually last night with a modification that we had been talking about for a couple of weeks, down to forty five million forty seven thousand one hundred and seventy six dollars. So when we start to look at that, next slide, please. When we start to look at where and why the numbers are where they are and I'm going to do this at a really high level because I could talk an hour on each of these topics essentially. And I think it was really confirming a number of us were at a legislators breakfast with districts from all over the state a week or so ago. And we were actually a superintendent's able to put together a slideshow that represented all of us. We're all having the same challenges with mental health needs, academic needs and making sure that all our kids are getting back on track, not just because of the pandemic. It was exacerbated by the pandemic, the underlying issues we were already having, especially with mental wellness. So just in stating that a little bit more, what that turns into is some, are some of the special education needs that Alexa described. And in some cases, we're talking lower level needs and intervention and services by our staff within the schools. We've developed an extensive continuum of programs for students with these varying degrees of need to some very intensive programming that you've heard me talk a lot about, our ability to keep kids in district with some quite substantial social emotional challenges. We can't keep them all, however, and nor should we in some cases. And that's some of what's driving the increases here is those out of district placements. The ones that I personally watch happening most frequently through the special education department are the mental health needs becoming so acute, they have to go somewhere else to stabilize. We always try to bring them back as quickly as possible, but that is what's driving most of the out placements right now. There are some, one last continuum piece to the special education programs in-house and I'm going to name, it's because of the two buildings at the middle school. We established one of these social emotional programs last year, sixth grade for the incoming elementary school kids and we have to bridge them up to seventh and eighth. We didn't know if we'd be able to somehow share people. There's just no, absolutely no way with the needs in the sixth grade that are in that setting. So there is one additional FTE in this budget to continue the programming at Sandborne. One other piece that's worth noting, as we built the programs, we were bringing kids physically back from out of districts for in-hand savings. At CPS, we are down at about fifteen kids out of district. So we really have returned essentially the population you're going to return. Your savings now is in costs that you're avoiding and not incurring. And I think what's mitigated some of the increases in the budget the last number of years has been those savings of returning kids. So I think that's worth us noting and as Bob mentioned, we have a fourteen percent tuition rate increase to absorb. This, the superintendent's association and the school committee association are very actively lobbying with the legislators to find some relief to that. There's no answer to that right now, but there's a very active campaign going on. Next slide, please. So some of the breakout, I think which references some of the points Alexa made. We're looking at salary increases here, the equated to four point six percent. And you can see the numbers there. It's obviously the biggest driver. The non-salary is a moderate three hundred and thirty thousand, which does include all of the variables she mentioned with utilities, buses and instructional supplies. We are now, as of last night, at a four point seven percent increase having been at five point one for the last while and still, you know, never, we are never going to stand here and say we can't, we aren't always watching and looking for fine tuning on how these numbers play out. That's what led to the four point seven percent, plus some look at how our circuit breaker status is. And we will always continue to do that. Next slide, please. Just a little more detail on the break of, of the drivers this year. You can see the salary increases for the teaching staff. You can see we had some increase there to fulfill, fulfill all the service needs in the special education. We're definitely more engaged than ever in behavioral supports, which is the BCBA, physical therapy, nursing that sometimes requires one to one. All very significant and important interventions for children, but also come with some costs attached. We had a contractual adjustment to longevity in the CTA contract that we're needing to accommodate for. And then as Bob mentioned, steps, lanes, the offsets of retirements, like all of, all of that comes to a certain number that's in the budget and that's at the two hundred and sixty eight thousand right now. Non-teacher salaries contractual increases for primarily the tutor population in the K eight schools is that number you see there at four hundred and thirty three thousand. We are weaning off and many of you in the room will remember four years ago now, we offered a second retirement incentives and we did it a couple of, two or three years in a row. We actually greatly benefited as did the retirees, we're willing to say that it allowed some people to go a little earlier than they might have planned. It lowered our base number. We're still paying out the very last, I think this might be the last year, Bob, we'll check. So that, you know, we're now just reaping the benefit of that lower base that was formed as a result. And you can see the total salary cost drivers there at one point seven million. Next slide, please. Out of district tuitions, and this is the net because we do apply circuit breaker and the method to come to you with what the needs are is somewhat proportionate. Hundred and thirty five thousand and, you know, we're going to asterisk that with that's as of today. We think we can make needs be met with that, but it does change quickly on us at times. Energy and utility costs, property and liability insurance, transportation for special education, just like I mentioned for homeless comes with a significant cost associated with that. And our, we were able to actually offset a little bit of the contracted services. We've brought a couple of service providers in-house now and they are employees of the district and that's obviously cheaper than having certain services through outside vendors where we pay overhead. So a, a total increase there is two hundred and seventy one thousand. Next slide, please. Unbudgeted items, I'm not going to repeat this. I just gave you the update, but this is a real risk playing out in live time, so just note that again. Next slide, please. So just a little bit of comps, so you can see where we sit across many of our comparable districts. And I would say this is something we've worked actively to be able to not be the top of the list. That is not a chart I want to bring you at the top of the list. And a lot of that is the zero-based budgeting because we really drill down and start fresh every year. We're building up and we're not asking for things that essentially might be reserves if we had done it a different way. So I think we're proud, I know I'm proud of that in my six years here and, you know, hope that that can have some appreciation. Next slide, please. Little bit of update on our S R fundings at CPS. You can see S R one and two, the, the special ed supplement from ARPA. S R three is the bigger ticket number that we've been talking about for the last few years. There's a remaining balance there intentionally. We're on track with using it as we had planned through the process that was required by the government. We've spent just over half of that and I think the next slide, we advance outlines a little bit what's left of that plan. We've used some money for literacy and PD monies. We have used it for staff, very, very conscious of the cliff that that could provide. So we've been absorbing that staff in increments over the years, not as one big fell need when we, the money, money winds down, so, and then we have some summer school costs as well. Next slide, please. So this is the adopted budget as of last night, so it's a reminder of where we are at the four point seven percent increase. Next slide. That might be it. Yeah, just an overview of where we are. So we're happy to take any further questions and talk on the current status as Alexa mentioned. The delta right now with the guideline is five hundred and eighty five thousand dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Hunter, and I know, I guess I would note that from the warrant that is about one hundred and fifty thousand dollars lower.
Yes, that was what was voted last night.
Than the number printed in the warrant, thank you.
Correct.
Okay, any questions from the finance committee? I'll start with Parrishar. I just want to point a clarification. Alexa, you talked about eighty three or eighty five percent of the budget being salaries that you said are legally mandated. I just want to clarify, the contractual increases are mandated, right? But the FTEs are not legally mandated, correct? Okay, thank you. Other members of the finance committee? Right?
Thank you. On the, the one fifty, where, where did you get those, the savings?
Yep.
Did you reduce the gap?
Came from two different directions. Fifty thousand, it is from our work with Case Transportation, who provides our special education transportation. They've been fine tuning their numbers and their assessments to the districts. So we brought that to the school committee when they brought us the better number and we were able to recommend lowering that. The other was a recommendation from Bob and I to use a little more circuit breaker money and a hundred thousand offset to try to mitigate some of the difference here and we're comfortable with that. We're not going to want to keep going deeper into circuit breaker for reasons we've already talked about, but we thought that was a reasonable. But we thought that was a reasonable next step.
And just to follow up, so the other of the hundred and fifty. The actual reduction in the gross cost is fifty thousand.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I feel like I have a blind side here, so I'm going to turn to my left.
Don. Okay, hey, Dr. Hunter, thank you for, for filling us in on what's going on with Best Western and the enrollment, that's really helpful to know. In the big picture, is that the sort of thing that E and D would be used for and unbudgeted? Cost that you would have, might have to dip into E and D funds for?
E and D is not a one to one, you can't just go in there and draw out of it, do you want to give them the? Right, CPS doesn't have E and D, that would only be at the high school.
I see, okay. Okay, then the net add to, or the add to, to our CPS is nine students. And is it that we will, did I understand correctly, we will be reimbursed at eighteen thousand per student?
That's proposed, Desi has proposed that through the legislators, to the legislators, through the governors. Ask for the money, so there's a lot to play out here, yet the Senate has to approve the package. And then Desi will, I'm sure, work with other of the state agencies, I mean, these calls I'm on are like four different agencies at once. They're going to have to vet and decide how the allocations are going to work. Desi recommended eighteen thousand per child. Annually.
Okay, so if our cost per student is around twenty three thousand, and of course, it's not a bill per student, we know a lot of that's fixed costs. But the variable costs may be one or two thousand per student, I'm guessing.
Depending on the needs of the child.
Yeah, in addition to, so we'll, we'll be, we'll be well, well covered, I would guess. Especially because this is only a variable cost question.
I have a lot of concern of the kids we enroll, my big primary concern right now is English language. We have one teacher per school right now. We have a little bit of room to absorb kids, newcomers with no English are required to have two hours a day of one on one instruction. So we could quickly be into needing staff on English language.
Well, thank, thank you and your staff for being the face of Concord to these families.
Yeah, it's, it got a little harder today to see the names, I gotta say.
I'm wondering if you could, if you have this at your fingertips, I don't know, but what would the enrollment numbers for CPS for twenty two, twenty three, and then projected for twenty four?
I have them in previous slides, we can certainly pull that back up for you and get them back to you.
My memory is that it's declining.
There is, there is some, some slow decline there, where we, we're not surprised by that, we were actually counting on that to take some relief off of the middle school over the last few years. We're watching it carefully as we look. Right now, we're watching incoming kindergarten. So we'll see, but yes, there has been some slow decline.
Okay. I, I noticed that you'd put it up there, but I had seen it previously. That our cost per student is maybe close to ten percent more than the Carlisle cost. Can, can, do you have any comment or any observations on why that is?
I don't know Carlisle set up enough to be able to answer that.
Okay.
I think.
All right.
Nor am I, no, I didn't even see the number, so I can't, can't respond.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other members of the committee? Am I right, Lois?
Yeah, just a quick question. I spent a lot of time last year looking at your detailed budget book. Has that been finalized yet?
So we've been modifying what we're going to publish, I think the chairs and Bob and I are going to wrap that up. It's always tricky when we're not at guideline two to know what to publish when it's still moving. That's been a concern of mine in the past, we put out a lot of documents that are outdated very quickly, so. I, I think we're looking at what form Bob's brought a nice new set of eyes on what to publish and how to do it effectively and efficiently, so still under discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Any committee members online? Members of the audience? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
We were going around and not to the microphone.
Okay, sorry about that. Terry Ackerman, eighty nine East Bridge Road, I'm on select board but speaking as an individual. So, Dr. Hunter, I had the same question at the joint meeting last week or the week before. And I'm still having trouble understanding this, so. CPS is going up a lot more than the high school. And at the time, your answer was because of the Carlisle assessment, which I understand. So I went back and looked at that. And getting the assessment and just looking at the budget. I think I heard tonight that the high school budget was up three point something percent. So. It still seems to me that both schools and the town. And the citizens, everybody has been going through inflation and supply chain. And energy costs and, and both schools are going through mental health and sped. And so I don't understand why one school system is feeling it so much more than the other, forgetting the assessment, just looking at the budget.
Well, there's twice as many students in K eight. And we were still, we are still building the continuum of services from K two eight for some of these needs. And we're, we're just needing to fill that in more. The, I think the other part of the answer is the structure of the regional budget is very different. We've worked very hard to build reserves there. E and D is at four point six percent, circuit breaker is at a full year's carryover. Five years ago, we carried over zero in circuit breaker. And we were at under three percent in E and D. We've worked really hard to stabilize that, we can take a little more risk at CCHS because of those things. Which is why we were able to cut contingency, I know Bob did the region, but I had to say that. At CPS, we have a lot less to work with, it really is staff. Primarily, and then a small percentage of other things, so when student needs need continue to evolve and develop and. They are doing that at even the elementary schools. With some of the things we've talked about, we have to keep responding, so whether it's individual needs, we're building out programs. And there's less contingency, I think it's a combination of all those factors.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, I have one more question. That's okay.
One second, Christine.
Sorry. Can I, can I?
Yes, Christine.
I'm sorry, I get to interrupt you. Dr. Hunter, the, the discussion about mental health, so one. Question that's kind of been on my mind is, I understand that the schools. I guess legal requirement with respect to the special education. What, how does the line moving here, we're now, we're also covering mental health. So I often think of mental health issues as things that are covered by private insurance somehow, so I'm trying to understand. Why the schools need to take that on.
So there's layers to that answer too, one is the aggregate status of our kids has changed considerably. We're doing mental health work through social emotional learning for all kids now. All of them need us to help them process, cope, manage, recognize their emotions. Can I answer why that is? I think that's a whole nother presentation, there's a lot of us as educators identifying where we think that's coming from and it's. Complicated and complex. The acute needs are, you can't educate a child who's unavailable to learn. So there's no way to not do mental health at these levels, whether it's the aggregate, the acute, or the really intensely serious, we have suicidal kids. As low as elementary school and I. I was involved in two situations last week where kids were literally. Attempting to hurt themselves. We're getting youth risk behavior service, survey data that shows twenty five percent of our kids self-report that they have thought about doing that. There's just a really bad state of mind among our kids. It was there before the pandemic, all that isolation, restriction, and now acclimation to try to get back to what they had been doing. Has just exponentially exacerbated it, to your point. The mental health system outside of the schools is completely broken. And we are having to take on more and more of it because of that. So there's so many layers. And that's something as educators, we're actively rallying and trying to lobby that. The system has to be fixed, because right now, we send kids, suicidal kids to the ER, they sit there for three days and they're back to us. We have to be responsive, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's obviously a problem, but it's, it's a huge cost, right, for, for us.
And more important to me is that our kids are okay, we have no choice, it is, of course it is.
I understand, but that's, that's a big nut to take on.
Yep, and every district of dozens in the room last week had the same conversation. Between the special education cost to educate the kids and the mental health needs in the school to regulate. That's, that's where we are in the public schools, we're doing it on a daily basis, trying to. Make everything better.
Now Christine, I think your point is well taken, what's that breakpoint between education and healthcare? And of course, both sides want to push it to the other side, but.
I mean, the healthcare system, it's not even an insurance and coverage question, there just aren't services. So at this point, until the mental health structure gets back in place, it's not even a discussion of who's going to pay, there's nothing to offer in many cases, very limited access. So we, we'd be happy to invite any legislators and mental health folks to have that conversation with all of us.
So how many of the new staff are, are directly addressing that, are we, are we hiring psychologists?
So at the, and I'll talk K eight, because that's the budget that we're on. Right now, we've been working with our current team of counselors and psychologists to rebrand their service provision, essentially. The place we've allocated increased staff over the last few years have been these intensive programs for. Kids who are just too fragile to be in the regular classroom most of the day. So that you've all supported, we've built out social emotional programs at Alcott, now two classrooms worth. We have one at the middle school and we're trying to build that out, and then we've built them up at the high school. A little bit of the S R money has been used to support some of these needs with a psychologist. We're trying really hard to do this with as little staff increases as possible. I think I'll just also name with a social emotional learning, the teachers are taking on more and more every day.
I'm trying to tie that back to that, to the increase in staffing though.
So there's only, in terms of the seven or eight positions that we've asked for. Let's say it's eight, seven of those are positions we had to put in place this year. So we're playing some catch up here because we had to reallocate to make it happen this year, and now we need to make it an ask for next year because of the needs of the kids. That came into us this summer and fall. So there's only one additional FTE from the current. Staff we have to next year, the rest of the increase is because we had to do it already.
So we're addressing the psychological needs without?
Yeah, the, the increase is certainly the mental health, there's some behavioral support there, there's a few other special needs services, all about. The intensive programs that are keeping our kids in district.
Okay.
Okay, sir.
Wilson Kerr, twenty Damon Street. So I guess just a couple. Comments about this budget and in the context of attending the February fifteenth joint. School Committee and FinCom meeting. And at that meeting, there was definitely a, a much more sort of adversarial feeling. From the FinCom regarding. The approval of this ask of four point seven percent. There was comments made about, you know, why should I ask my neighbors to pay for services I don't need? There's a different feeling here tonight, but I think it's worth. Reminding as this FinCom debates and decides what they will recommend. To the townspeople who will indeed vote at the next town meeting. I'm glad to feel a softening, I don't, I don't know what you'll recommend, but just some thoughts about this budget. It seemed to me four point seven percent, given everything we've felt, we've heard, is completely reasonable. We're in an inflationary environment of eight percent. And so in that context, I said, well, wait a second, what else is going on at the town? The town government ask is thirty three million, an increase of eight point six seven percent this year. That's, I assume, for whatever the other elements of the town is, not our kids. The all other accounts, which I, which are thirty million dollars. Which make up the roughly other two thirds after the forty five that CPS is asking for, is asking for a five point eight percent increase. The average of these two, and they're about the same in terms of dollars, about thirty million each, is a seven point eight percent increase. Basically the same as inflation. So why then would the school be asked, our kids, given everything we've heard. To hit three point three percent in this environment? To me, that is stunning, especially when we've heard that fifteen percent is where you can move the needle. That fifteen percent includes a twelve percent energy increase. That's a twelve percent increase, they're asking for four point seven. And the rest is teacher salaries. We pay our teachers well, but they deserve it, and we are in the middle of the pack, which is really the number we should look at regarding cost per pupil. To me, that alone is this sort of badge of merit for what Lori Hunter has done to present this budget with the school committee and those who support. This very modest ask of four point seven. Given everything we've heard. I don't know if your attitude or demeanor has changed or what your vote will be. But I know it's feels different tonight, and I hope it's very different tonight than the attitude that I heard. But I think a lot of people heard in the room at the February fifteenth meeting. I hope you will approve this four point seven percent, very modest ask for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Matthew Johnson, twenty one Winton Street, member of the select board, speaking for myself. So, you know, we've heard about a level services budget tonight. And the nature of the guidelines process. You know, is to talk about a sustainable growth rate, which in itself is based upon the income increases of our town population. And so when you think about how, you know, our budgets. Are going up either above the guideline or you're even at the guideline. With excluded debt added on to it. What we end up with is a dilemma. In order for our schools, for example, to achieve a level services budget. Our households cannot by definition have a level services budget. They have to make cuts. So I guess the question I would have is. How do we justify making our public? Our homeowners make cuts because we know that they have to in aggregate. Some may not have, but in aggregate, they will have to. In order to achieve level services in our town. So. How can we? Justify it?
You want me to answer? Oh, I guess I'll be happy to answer that. My job is to advocate for the needs of the students and bring you the most responsible budget that I possibly can. I personally think the majority of this community wants to support a level service budget. I'm working very hard to try to come up with the best outcome of this dilemma, your word. As possible, but I, 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 my job is to advocate for the children. And I am absolutely doing that, and I think the last six years shows that I've done it responsibly and respectfully. And worked very hard to never lose track of fiscal impact to the taxpayer. But I don't think my job is to decide that I drop below level service, I think the community needs to engage at that point. My job is to bring level service and the, the community at large decides whether to support it or not.
So do we have a plan B?
I have shared a cut list potentially with the school committee to look at. It's not level service at that point, so it's not a recommendation I'm making, but it certainly had to start to be talked about as to what would happen if this budget doesn't.
Because I think what I'm hearing, just as a select board member. Is a different tone than I have in many years, twenty years at least in town. Which is long-term residents seriously considering moving out of town. Because they can no longer afford to live in the town. And so it is a very serious consideration, it's, it's not just a little bit tougher, okay, we'll tighten a little bit more, we're hitting. At least for some residents, a breaking point. And so I think, you know, we need to think about how that is, is associated with the identity of our town, the residents that live here. So I just wanted to make that note.
Dean Banfield, seventy three Walden Terrace, can we have the slide up again that shows the histogram of costs across multiple communities? Thank you. Mr. Cupka asked the question, how is it that Concord is ten percent more than Carlisle? Concord is a K through eight system. Carlisle is also a K through eight system. Okay, so we're ten percent more in our K through eight, but if we compare Concord to something like Lexington or Newton. Or Wellesley or Weston, or on the other side, Needham or Bedford, those are full systems that include a high school. It would assume, I would assume that the cost of educating a high school student. It would assume, I would assume that the cost of educating a high school student is generally more expensive. There are more elaborate math, I'm sorry, more elaborate science requirements. There are more sophisticated field trips and, and other kinds of expenses that go into other elaborate sports programs that go into a high school that are not necessarily there in a K through eight system. And yet we are on a per student basis, almost touching right up to the exact same cost per student that our high school is costing. So it's kind of a mystery to me why our K through eight system has gotten to this level. That is just a comment. It's not.
Thank you, Dean. Yes.
Liz Kroll, two twelve Hubbard Street. In regard to the, the concept of breaking points, while I appreciate the challenges of high taxes in Concord, I, I feel like there's a delivery of services across the spectrum. And I, as Dr. Hunter already pointed out, as the parent of two teenagers, both at the high school now, but who've gone through the Concord Public Schools, worry about the breaking point of the many professionals, teachers, paraprofessionals, bus drivers, who have been so pushed by the circumstances of the past few years and who are de facto taking on many of the mental health challenges in their classrooms that Dr. Hunter has discussed. So I just worry about any cuts beyond a level budget. And of course, I worry about the children who, I have a wife who works in the Arlington Public Schools. These are not unique situations. And I can tell you that getting kids services, even a counseling appointment, like sort of a loosey goosey counseling appointment, almost impossible for about six months. So that is why the school is taking on more. And we need to support the schools fully to support our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to, I don't want to compare numbers now, but I'd be more than pleased to meet with you afterwards and show you the numbers that the town and the schools have provided us. So we have a consolidated view of spending across all three, because I'm not sure where some of your numbers are coming from, but happy to reconcile them a little bit, yeah, afterwards. Because I'm not sure where they've come from. Fair enough. And so I'll show you what we've got that again, has been sent to us by the schools and the towns, different categories and then the sums, and you'll kind of see what we're looking at as we kind of think about what the increases have been for both the town and the schools over the last year or two. And then what it looks like for the next five years as well.
Good evening. My name's John Peachey. I live at forty four Bedford Court. I was able to walk here this evening. Being so close. I'm here today to support Dr. Hunter. I thank Mr. Prowl, Mr. Kerr for advocating for the budget because as a Concord resident of twenty eight years, I'm very lucky to live here in this town. My father lived here. He was educated in the Concord Public Schools. Both of his sisters were even more lucky. Both of my boys have been educated here. I have a twenty-two-year-old son. He started in kindergarten at Alcott, went through grade twelve at high school. He's currently getting his masters at Plymouth State in the early age. My other son started at the integrated preschool. He needed that. Thankfully, Mrs. DeFrancesco, who's even online right now, had him for a year or two, helped get him ready for kindergarten, and he's going to be graduating this year from Concord Carlisle on June third, twenty twenty-three. So I speak to you as a Concord resident of twenty-eight years. I also speak to you as a teacher. I've been employed in the Concord Public Schools since nineteen ninety-one. The past thirty-one years, I've worked at Alcott. Very lucky to be there. I attended the meeting that was in February over Zoom, and Dr. Hunter had to present a cut list or a reduction list. I cringed as I was listening to it because I know all of those reductions and all of those cuts, while they might just be something on paper, they're going to have an immediate and drastic impact upon our schools. Our schools will suffer. Our students will suffer. Both of my boys are going to be gone. You know, they're not going to suffer. But it's everyone who comes now. And if you looked at that list, it's a pretty big one. I know our schools are great. I've worked here for thirty-one years. I don't need the Boston Magazine to tell me our schools are great. I don't need M C A schoolers to tell me my schools are great. I see the teachers who are here tonight. They're all around us. I see the work they do every day. I know what they do is great. I don't need scores to tell me. But if you look at the cut list, some of the things on here are going to have an immediate impact. Dr. Hunter put field trips on there. Field trips are crucial to the education of our students. I work at Alcott, and this year I've been able to go into a third grade class a couple times, check the Alcott Twitter for proof. And I've taken pictures of the Concord Museum coming to Alcott and giving kids the opportunity to see actual artifacts of the Native Americans who lived here. That's huge. The kids learned about it from their teachers, but to see it in person and hold it in their hand, oh my gosh, what an experience. If we took that away from them, you know, we're going to lose something. The special ed coordinator and tutors were on the list. Dr. Hunter talked about our most fragile students. Many of them are out of district. We have fragile students here. She's talked about that length. If we lose our special ed coordinator and the tutors, the kids who are in our rooms are going to suffer. The special educators who are teaching those kids are going to suffer because they're not going to have the coordinator, and they're not going to have tutors to support. Our steam lab over at Ripley, beautiful facility. If you've never seen it, you're going to go over there. Check it out. We're going to lose the coordinator there. That's an opportunity for kids to go and learn about STEM, where the careers of the future exist. And we could lose that. You've heard at length back in February, all the high school students coming up to you and talking to you about instrumental music. It starts in the elementary grades. Both my boys were lucky enough to have Mr. Halpini and Mr. Nosie. They didn't have Mrs. Anderson, but she's equally as good, but thankfully they didn't try a string instrument. But they were there with Mr. Nosie and Mr. Halpini, and they played through middle school. My oldest son Charlie played in high school with Mr. Gresko. I own a set of drums in my basement because of the instrumental music. If we were to lose it, we're going to lose a band. And many of those teachers who are here see it every day. Those kids carry those giant instrument bags downstairs and they play because they love it. They could lose that. Professional development with Dr. Hunter's this. The teachers who are here, we got a lot of PD, thanks to the district. The PD keeps us current. It keeps us knowledgeable. Without it, we're going to have to seek the PD on our own. We already do that because every five years we need to get a hundred and fifty-something PD points. But the district provides fabulous PD, diversity and equity, social, emotional, reading, writing. We could lose all of that. Librarians were on the list. Tonight you have all three of them here from the K fives. These people love what they do. I have a librarian at home. I'm married to. I know what librarians do. They give the kids a love of books, starting at the youngest age. The kindergartners come home with a picture book. Moms and dads get to read it to them. They bring it back and they get another one. Our kids could lose that. The love of reading starts at kindergarten and it goes through grade five. I'm going to move real fast, I promise. Digital citizenship skills. They needed more now than ever. You see it on the TV, TikTok. Really, it's one of the things that the kids need to learn how to navigate social media. Our librarians help them with that. And one of the other positions on here is actually my own, and I feel really bad advocating for my own position. I, it's uncomfortable. I don't want to do it. But the technology specialists are here. We do so much. Every single day, we work with four hundred plus kids, a hundred plus adults every single day. If we were to remove the K eight tech specialists, the technology program that we have won't exist, or it won't exist to the degree what we have. So all I'm here to do is to employ Dr. Budget, Dr. Hunter's.
I feel like Dr. Budget lately. That's funny, John.
Dr. Hunter is one of the most transparent superintendents we've had in years. She and Bob, and prior to Bob, Jared Stanton, provided budgets to you that have always been perfect. Okay, she's asking for us to increase our budget. I ask you to support it. Our students and our teachers deserve it. Thank you, and I'm sorry for going over.
Well, I thank you very much, and I certainly hope that with out of tech specialists that we don't have to do that at home. Don, you want to say something?
I, I, I do. I, I, I want to say.
And I have, I, just a second, and I do see the two hands raised online, so we'll get to you in, in one second.
First, Mr. Peachey, my, my daughter Grace thoroughly enjoyed your class and say hi to, tell, tell Charlie that Grace says hi. I'm sure she would want that, that message. Your, your impassioned talk was, was very helpful and it reminded me of, of, of our librarian here who, who gave a similar talk in the other last session. And I want to say on behalf of Concord to you and to everybody else, you should not have to go through what, what you've been being put through in this process. This is not professional. In the, in my career, for it to put out a list of potential, with always potential budget cuts, but to put that out and put, make people feel that anxiety is so wrong. And I hope you get an apology from more than just me, but I, I, I ask the FinCom not to in the future, ask for specific positions to be reduced, to be cut, because that's just not, these are, these are people's lives, and we should not be putting people through this, this level of stress. This is not your responsibility. This is between the administration and, and the FinCom. And to Mr. Johnson's point, we also know there were probably fifty or so families who are going to have to move out of Concord based on all of the things that we, we are doing and we want to do, and we all know some of them. And so we are in this very difficult mind, but you shouldn't feel, have to be feeling that personal weight at this time. It's just, it's just not right.
Thank you, Don. Okay, online, Mr. Benjamin.
Yes, hello, hi. Todd Benjamin, Sunbury Road. Thank you for allowing me to speak, which I could be there in person, but hopefully next time. One of the questions that I have pertains to professional development. It's, it's always been something I've been a, a little curious and confused about. And it seems like that's an area where we could possibly control costs. And one of the things that I'd like to understand is what is the total cost of professional development? Total cost meaning what is the cost for the facilitators who, who present these professional development opportunities? The cost for travel, the cost for food, the cost for printouts, teacher salaries for, for attending these, the absolute total cost. And then my other question is, how do we justify thirty paid professional development days per year? I remember a, a meeting maybe one or two years ago where one of the administrators boasted that we have more professional development days in Concord than Brookline does. And Brookline is a school district that is at least twice as large as Concord. And it really made me curious as to how does that, how does that happen? And, you know, I have to confess, I'm unfamiliar with any profession that has thirty paid professional development days in an eleven-month period. And so I, I really wonder, you know, how do we maybe save some, cut some costs here without impacting our students? How do we strike a, a more, a more realistic balance with educating the teachers and giving them the professional development they need? We, we know all professions need professional development, but how do we, how do we balance that? And in the same manner, if we can balance that, then perhaps we can also increase the amount of education hours that our children are receiving. So it seems like a reasonable area to look at to cut costs, and I'd appreciate some, some insight so that I can become educated as to those two questions I have. A, what is the total cost of the professional development? And how do we justify thirty paid professional development days a year in an eleven-month period? Thank you.
I'll answer as best I can off the top of my head. Obviously, we don't have that breakout right here in front of us. We're always looking to be as fiscally responsible and quality-driven in the professional development offerings that we provide. I'll have to say Zoom's been a game changer in that we are able to access experts from all over the country and world through Zoom at a very reasonable cost in ways that never existed before. So we're very thoughtful about that. Sometimes the professional development is very program-specific. I'm going to name that in the new S A L program that we're bringing in. We're actually training everyone in the elementary schools this summer through a Concord Ed Fund grant. We didn't even bring you the ask for the sixty thousand dollars. So we're always trying to mitigate that while we ensure teachers have the knowledge and the skill sets that they need to be as current, advanced and ready for the needs of kids and for themselves. I think for the second part, studies all over the world show that the teachers need time with each other. They need time in professional development. In fact, the U S is one of the few countries where kids are in seats as long as they are and teachers have as little time as they have. So it's really important, the time that we have. I, I left a conversation with the C C T A at the high school this afternoon where Kristen Herbert and I are like, our biggest need is time. There's just no question about that. Money too, of course, especially in this room, but time is incredibly precious to us and time we can dedicate to allowing teachers to collaborate, learn together and reflect on student needs. We do a lot of work on what kids need, both individually and as a group in that time. So I think it's actually pretty moderate. That would be my personal opinion, and there's certainly places around the globe that are doing far more.
Well, I have a, a follow-up question if I, if I may, and, and that, on that topic then. So I guess, you know, how are we measuring the benefit to teachers of this? There was an interesting study that was mentioned in the Washington Post from an organization, the New Teacher Project. And they have looked at professional development programs for teachers. They actually did a survey of over ten thousand teachers. And essentially their conclusion is that unfortunately, a lot of professional development is not effective. And they've mentioned that their, their analysis has computed that it costs an average of eighteen thousand dollars per teacher annually for professional development. But that was based on far less days of professional development than what we have here in Concord. So I guess the follow-up question is really, how do we understand the benefit that professional development days are giving our teachers and more importantly, our students?
We have lots of metrics. We went through a good deal of them at a number of the different meetings we've had this past fall and winter. We're happy to send you more of that by email if you want to send that to me. I'm not, I don't have all of that here at my fingertips tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mary Hartman.
Thank you, Peggy. Hi, my name is Mary Hartman. I live at sixteen Concord Green. I'm a member of the Select Board and I'm speaking for myself. As I'm listening tonight, I really am sympathetic with the budget pressures on the CPS. Energy costs, the costs for special ed, the costs for mental health. I understand these are real budget pressures. I also understand the other side though, which is that the tax burden on our residents has become onerous and we're forcing some of the people who actually built this town to think about moving out. And I've been watching the same conversation now for six years, and we focus on spending. And I'm wondering if we could think, instead of spending, if we could talk more about what are some of the revenue sources that we could use to kind of alleviate some of this pressure? And I, I, actually I listened tonight to Minuteman's presentation and they're using grants very creatively and they're using public-private partnerships creatively. And, and I know that here, Dr. Hunter, you just mentioned the Ed Fund. So my question is, what other sources of revenue can we be looking at creatively going forward that could kind of ease some of these tensions that we seem to be experiencing year after year? And that are only getting worse. Thank you.
I can rattle off some. We're always watching. Desi puts out grants regularly. We've applied for a good number. We could list some of those topics. We watch for private funds. We're going to approve five hundred, five thousand dollars worth of mental health need support to the high school on, on Tuesday night when we meet in a private grant. So we're, we're always watching and applying. I'll be very frank to say the demographic here prohibits access to certain grants. And I think sort of rightfully so, right? We'd want some of the districts less resourced to, to get priority. But our eyes are, are always looking. We work very collaboratively with the P T G's, Community Chest, certainly all the local organizations and, and look for other grants as they're available.
Thank you. Casey Atkins.
Hi, thank you so much for taking the question and thank you to the FinCom for your work on behalf of the town. It is very much appreciated. My name is Casey Atkins. I'm at four seventy-seven Lawsbroke Road. I am a co-president of the Special Education Parent Advisory Council for Concord Public Schools and Concord Carlisle Regional School District. I am here tonight as a private citizen. I just wanted to give some commentary and some highlight a personal experience in terms of the line between special education and mental health and where we would hope to expect private insurance to step in and step up to the need that is here. Private insurance to step in and step up to the need that is here. Um, my child, um, went into mental health crisis this fall and. I spent over two weeks sleeping on the floor of the ER at Boston Children's Hospital. Waiting for services that never came. The only remedy, immediate or otherwise, that was able. To be there for us, to service my child and to bring him back from the brink was the schools. And it was a team effort. From Principal Angel Charles at the Row to his general education classroom teacher, who by the way. Does PD that touches these issues to his paraprofessionals, to the school counselor. To the other service providers that are part of his team. Without them, we would have been in an abyss. And we're informed. We know how to access services. They are that lacking. So I just want to be clear. And put a point of personal. Reference here about how dire the mental health crisis is. And how deeply pulled in the school system is to answer that call on a daily basis. I hope that the town can come together to address this budgetary issue, to find the money for the schools. And also come together, bring heads to focus on how we can remedy this in the future. Because so many of our wonderful citizens who were part of building this town should not be priced out. But that is a quandary that we need to focus in a holistic manner and not just in an annual. Conversation about a school budget versus a town budget. Thank you for your time and for your service.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other comments? I think we're ready to move on to. Article eighteen. Which is the Concord Public School Capital Budget. Dr. Hunter.
Actually Bob's gonna do this one. No, I'm. Gonna take a break. He's gonna do this one. I'll be back.
Stretch your legs. It would, if, if folks would like to take a break, we could do, uh, two minutes. No, okay. People are shaking their head. Well, I am actually going to take a break, but, um, I've already heard this. I've already heard the slideshow, so I'll be right back. Go ahead, Bob.
This will be done before you get back. I don't know. Um. So I'm presenting here the, um. We call this tier one. Where's the, who's the tier expert? Is this tier one? Okay, um, this is our, um, request for Concord Public Schools capital projects, um. And it's been typically a, um, nine, a, a fixed amount to cover our capital needs. We don't. And we work to fit within the allocation that we get, um, from the town. Uh, so this is just the language that we presented at town meeting for the nine hundred thousand. The next slide, please, we'll. Walk through, uh, what we're planning to use these funds for next year. Um, the first one is, um. The Ripley School, we have some HVAC upgrades we're planning to do, uh, to go to a heat pump system in the pods in the preschool. Uh, that seven hundred forty-five thousand covers the cost of the. Of the heat pumps and the infrastructure in that area. We have some funds left over from last year there and that were assigned to cover the actual electricity up. Electrical service upgrade to the building that needs to go with this. We have some repairs at the Thoreau Lot loading dock that are needed. It's not, um, uh, in good condition and not necessarily a safe physical space. Submission there, so the estimate there is thirty thousand dollars that we've allocated and assigned to that project. Um, we've met with the community members, um, in, uh, the Thoreau School, the. School has been in a bit of state of flux with, um, the fire, uh, a couple of years ago and, uh. Temporary, uh. School rooms put out in the grounds and now, um, kind of crushed stone, uh, parking space. And so, uh, we have agreed to kind of work with, uh, some consultants and come up with the plan on how to best utilize the space going forward. Uh, and the last one hundred thousand is, um, we have two, is one hundred thousand, fifty thousand dollars, you know, for each school, but for whichever school needs it, uh, more practically. To cover, uh, things that may arise in, uh, both old school buildings, puberty and sandborne for health, uh, safety and life. Um, this is not intended to cover things that are discretionary that we can avoid. Obviously with the new school coming online. We're only going to do what we feel, uh, is addressing a, a safety need or has to be done. Um, and that's the, the full nine hundred thousand that we have planned, uh, for use, uh, next fiscal year with these funds.
I just have a question. Uh, um. Every year there's always nine hundred thousand dollars and that's. And I'm wondering, can you take this year and can you find five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars? That, um, we can. We can move into what is one of the.
Does this work? Okay, okay. Um, I'm curious, Bob, if we can. Postpone some of these activities this year. And somehow capture five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
So if, um, I, I'll just answer the what would happen if we did first. If we did, we'd have a structural deficit in our budget going into FY twenty-five. We would be. Nine hundred thousand is the capital allocation that's been determined to be needed by CPS on a year-over-year basis. The following year, you'd have a budget that goes up. Um, so, you know, destabilizer, kind of create a little structural deficit there. Uh, the Ripley project was deferred a year. Um. There is a significant, um, desire that's been expressed to us from the community to move towards sustainability. The Ripley HVAC project moves to a system that will. Get off of fossil fuels in those, uh, spaces, so. It is something that's been conveyed to us as an important initiative that we want to advance sustain, sustainability and that's the bulk of what those dollars are. A hundred thousand for puberty and sandborne. I would definitely not advocate, uh, taking out. That is, we need to have a safety net for two old buildings.
I'm just add to that. One of the timelines driving the Ripley project is the Green Cities Grant that we got last year through the town, actually.
Okay.
The application we put in, we have to use those funds this coming fiscal year or we're going to be the ability.
Okay.
That's, that's the timeline.
I'm, I'm not trying to take away all the money. You still have three hundred and fifteen thousand. Um, is it right? Yeah.
We have that slide again.
Uh, it, it's just. We're really looking for money. And, um, I really appreciate what the school committee has already done in dropping a hundred and fifty thousand out. We need, we need to find more money and if it's not this year. It's going to be desperate next year in trying to find how we can support. A budget that's going to be three percent next year. A three percent increase, not, not alone, but four point seven, which is what this is. So I'm, if, if there are ways that we can shift dollars, I'd like to see it and see what we can do about it. And that's all I want to say. Thanks.
Is that the beautiful committee?
I'm gonna move to Carmen.
Uh, yeah, uh, Carmen Reestown, moderator. I just thought it might be helpful to observe on, uh, Dee's question. That this is a borrowing article. And so if you take anything out of it, it, it couldn't be directly applied to an operating, uh, budget. What this will do is increase the debt service by some much smaller amount. So you could probably reduce the, and this is also, this particular debt service is wrapped up in the town manager's, uh, capital plan. So thi- this isn't really a place you could go for that kind of.
Well, I thought I'd bring it up anyway.
Dee, it was a good try. Okay. Thank you, Carmen. Okay, any other questions from the committee? Online?
I do, Peggy.
Uh, Christine.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so the, uh, the fire at Thoreau, I'm glad you reminded me of that. I sort of had forgotten about that. So. That was, is that all, are, are the classrooms and so forth all repaired? Yeah.
Fire were all back on track until the pipe froze in the same attic. A month ago and flooded the same classroom. And it's now back offline while Maya fixes it. So, yes, but not anymore.
And, and this Thoreau master or campus master plan, what, what will that entail?
That's the grounds. Um, the grounds had not been looked at over there in quite a long time. We. Thanks to last year's allocation in the capital plan, we were able to put a, a small new playground in over there this fall, but outside of that, we've done nothing. Um, the field where there was an eight classroom modular wing for six months is quite torn up. We left the gravel there and we've been using it as overflow parking. Which is actually maybe a potential we want to look at down the road. We need to just assess everything there between the playgrounds, the conditions of the. The land itself, the field and the gravel. It just needs a big look. The neighborhood actually came and asked us to. Um, please do some looking to see what we want to do down the road.
Thank you.
Yep, could maybe, uh, Bob or. Dale, combination of you can help me understand the nine hundred thousand, the debt service?
That. It's debt authorization.
That authorization, but when we do borrowing, there's debt service involved, right?
It would become part of the ongoing payments and debt service in future years.
And that's listed under the town budget.
Correct.
Is that correct?
It's all part of the debt. It's a separate line item, but it is part of the overall.
It's all part, okay, so it's not in, if it's not in school, it's not in school budget.
Not usually.
Okay, not anymore. Okay.
It, it is not part of the C, the CPS budget, so it would not impact their. Allocation at all.
Dean.
Uh, Dean Danfield, seventy-three, Walden Terrace. Uh, in last year's capital article. Uh, there was some money that was originally planned for Alcott High, High, uh, Efficiency Boilers to be replaced. And that was redirected in the end to fifty thousand dollars instead of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for new boilers. It was directed to fifty thousand dollars for a consulting contract to study doing a heat pump system for Alcott. And the other three hundred was allocated to upgrades to the electrical service for Ripley, which will then service the new seven hundred plus for, for the Ripley upgrade that you're trying for this year. However, the boilers have nothing in the plan, in the five-year plan. There's nothing. For the Alcott boilers or for the electrification of Al, Alcott's heating system. So I'd just like some update on. Where that study led and how we're planning to do Alcott or, are the boilers really as. Difficult as they seem to have been last year when we were looking for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
So we're currently, um, have, we have a feasibility study being, um, complete, well, we have a draft actually that we presented to the school committee. The March fourteenth, um, on, on the options, uh, that they'll present and recommend. We asked them to look at different options. Base option was high efficiency boilers, um, look at a, a hundred percent. Electric option, um, and to look at a hybrid model and, and then a biomass model. And they looked at a couple of other things too that they ruled out for, for different reasons. So. That fifty thousand will be essentially spent. The bids came in a little bit less than fifty. There's some money that will be left over. Um, so that work will be presented in March fourteenth. We'll get feedback based on that report. There are very different options, uh, that they'll be presenting with, um, different benefits and different costs. And, um, I will go into those on the fourteenth. We'll have to factor in then what we do with our capital plan and make a decision.
So right now, there's literally nothing like zero for Alcott, but there's a, an upgrade. Plan for Thoreau, so it, uh, can Alcott coast for. Ever for the next five years, like nothing in the five-year plan at all. Um, surely we should have a placeholder in there for Alcott.
Some of the items out in further years are placeholders that we could reevaluate and reassign, uh, to the boilers at Alcott.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, oh, Dee, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Diane Proctor, fifty-seven Sudbury Road. I just want to remind us that one of the things we've been saying with, with the building of the new middle school. Um, is that, oh my gosh, why didn't we take care of those buildings? And this nine hundred thousand dollars isn't, is the routine and we do give it each year. Um, but what it does is to sustain the buildings that we have so that we don't find them aging prematurely. Uh, and so, you know, that money is usually, in, in my experience, very well spent. So thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, just I'll remind folks that think those buildings are brand new. They are approaching fifteen or twenty years already and, uh. No one likes stage prematurely. Thank you for that.
Couldn't jump in there. Dom.
Uh, just, uh, regarding the Alcott boilers, um. I've, I've done, I, and, and some of the Alsonic committee has done a lot of commercial buildings too. Um, we should get a lot more than twenty years out of, out of boilers. Um, it, we, they were depreciating them. We would have a thirty-year schedule on them. So we would have to take a write-off as well. So I'm concerned that either, uh, they, we're replacing them prematurely or else we are, um. The, you know, we, we haven't maintained them. So that's a big picture question for the, for the Alcott. And I'm all for, uh, e- e- energy improvements, but let's do that at end of life, not. Along, you know, while we still have ten more years worth of life. Second question though, is about the Ripley building. Um, where is the operating budget for Ripley?
Embedded in the two budgets.
It's embedded in the two. And so I guess, um. You know, that meeting we had, the joint meeting was my first time in there and I was saying, wow, this is amazing. Um, how many people work in there?
At Ripley?
Yeah.
In the central office?
Yeah.
Thirty-ish of us, but. The heat, the heat pumps you're talking about are actually going to go on the preschool.
Okay.
The pods at the preschool, the four class.
Oh, okay. There's, so the heat pumps are for the, for the preschool for how many, I mean, again, seven hundred.
It's the entire integrated preschool of about fifty kids, four classrooms plus all the support staff.
All right, you could probably heat a, you know, a hundred thousand square foot building with, uh, that kind of a budget. So. I just, it just, something isn't right in my.
It's the electrical upgrade that's required. This is the short answer. We're happy to get you the documents we have.
I've never worked in schools, only in for-profit institutions, right? Where we always have budget discussions, always have to. Prove out. You know, that the.
Well, we've done that with the school committee, I think, is the part. Maybe we haven't.
Okay.
Shared much with you.
All right, well, as a FinCom member, something doesn't feel right, that's all. And, and I, that's just have to say that.
Thank you, Don.
Yep.
To the point, to the point on the Alcott though, there, there is, um, in our understanding is there is sustainability goal for, to, to move towards sustainability. So we have the little bit of, you know, pressure on one side to pursue and look into sustainability options while kind of being fiscally responsible. So. We are trying to strike a balance to look at selectively at some projects where it makes sense to look at sustainability.
Well, last year we spent three hundred thousand on diesel buses. Would we throw those away and be at electric buses for the sustainability goal? Probably not. You're going to get the life out of the buses you bought.
That's why I said selectively, right?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to check the life of the Alcott boiler. I don't think we're bringing it all that premature. I don't have.
Okay, let's move on to article nineteen, which is the Concord. Uh, public capital project, field and landscaping.
Thank you. So I think the sh- there's a short story and I'll, maybe we can stick to that tonight if we.
Uh, I think we all know the long story.
You do. I know, that's why.
Why don't you give us the short one?
The short story is the school committee's put forward an article. That should the middle school bid, which is actually out now with the contractors, come in over the allocation. And we have to go to the duck, deduct alt list. Of which the fields and landscaping are on. Then there's another option to fund it. So if this were to have to. Be pursued, which no one in the room wants it to be. Um, that would be the plan that this would allow for the fields and the landscaping to go out under a separate bid at a later time. Uh, to then make sure that the grounds are whole if, if the cost of the project comes in overbid. It's April twenty-first or second, right before town meeting.
Right before town meeting. So if the bid comes in and you, we don't, we, it's possible you may not move this.
Correct. That's the hope, because we're not moving this.
Okay, any further questions?
Yep.
Yes, Dee.
When do you need to have the fields, um, finished?
Certainly when you open, you want to have the fields well underway.
And that's going to be in, hopefully it's going to be February twenty twenty-five?
Correct.
Is there any way that you can come with this request if it's needed? Is there any way you can come with this request next? Is there any way you can come with this request next year?
I think the hope of the committee and as they voted, and I'm looking at Alex a little bit, was to, this would allow for current costs to be factored in. You could go out to bid now and secure that.
I think Dee is wondering whether you could bring it to the Community Preservation Committee.
We certainly are going to pursue that and talk with them and maybe that will take care of some of this.
Or if, if the Community Preservation, Community Preservation Committee didn't have the funding available at that time for next year, could you also just have it on next year's warrant?
Do you want to answer that? I'm not going to answer for the committee. So I think that the sentiment was this eliminates some of the risk in doing that. So we absolutely could do what you're saying. The, the, the problem that I see with that, the potential pitfall is this year, we have a sense that the bids for this aspect of the project are going to come in at around one point eight million dollars. If we wait next year till next year and there are further instabilities in like the larger economic market, that bid might be three million. And then did we miss this opportunity to lock in a price for the project? For, to me, my sense is, is this is more responsible because we're eliminating a lot of that risk. However, that being said, we've already met with CPC. They don't have funds available for grants this year. They will in the fall, I think, is the timing. You know, and certainly we've been, it's been indicated to us that they would never be able to cover the full amount. But there, you know, there would be a hope and a desire that they would offset some of those costs regardless of whether this article gets advanced. Is that helpful? Thank you.
Can I go to Nancy Hartman online?
Mary Hartman.
You mean Mary?
Sorry, Mary.
That's okay. Thank you, anyway. My name is Mary Harron. I'm on the select board. I'm speaking for myself. I have a question about the process for large capital projects. In twenty twenty, the school committee and the finance committee and the select board agreed on a process for long-range capital. We called it a tier three project, which includes any projects over five million or any project that was part of another project that was going over five million. And the whole purpose of this process that we agreed to was so that we would come together annually and kind of integrate and time some of our spending going forward. And so this year, the select board and the school committee had two meetings. And at the time, the select board and the town presented what we are hoping to fund in the coming years. And that included improvements to DPW and public safety, the police department in particular. And yet the one point eight million project, which is clearly a capital project, was not brought up. So I'm wondering, it's a, and I'm wondering why? And I'm wondering if we can make sure that in the future we are cognizant and agree to the process that we implement the process that we agreed to two years ago. That's my comment. That's my question actually to the school committee.
Do you want to, do you want to take that? I think the short answer is yes, we definitely want to sync up with the process. We're committed to that process. I think I'm, I'll speak for myself. I won't speak for the committee, but I think the timing of the project and the moving pieces of where we were drove it a little beyond what the process was allowing for. I don't, I think we're all glad to be on the other side of that, part of that building discussion. And I think everything else going forward should, should align.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Because I have the same concern Mary does. What other projects do you see coming down the pipe that are tier three that you would need to put through the process, just out of curiosity?
So tier three being over five million dollars, correct? Or. To the list.
So in essence, there isn't anything, which is why people are happy to align to a process. And when there is a process in place, convenience, expediency, yet aside set the process. It's just observation, no, no other thought, no responses required.
Okay, Diane.
Thank you, Diane Proctor, fifty-seven, Sudbury Road. I'm the chair of the CPC and I'm speaking not for the entirety of the committee, but for historical experience. And that is that applications don't have to be all in one swell hoop. You can apply a one year for a rather large grant and then with the anticipation that then you would come back for yet another, which would then allow the CPC perhaps. And again, the committee would have to adjudicate and deliberate it in comparison to other requests. But there could be a substantial reduction of those costs by using CPC funds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else on this article? No, okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you all.
Our next article is Article twenty, which I'll present.
I'm Peggy Briggs, Chair of the Finance Committee. And this Article twenty will transfer seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the overlay surplus account, which is related to the assessing department, and two hundred and fifty from free cash for a total of one million dollars to the middle school stabilization fund. In September twenty twenty, we used two million dollars to establish the middle school stabilization fund. In twenty twenty-three, we added one point five million to the stabilization fund, a million from the overlay surplus and five hundred thousand from free cash. In February twenty-two, we approved about one point three million for the middle school project. And in January twenty-three, we approved an additional seven point two million for the middle school. The Finance Committee previously recommended a stabilization fund of five million. By transferring the seven fifty from the overlay surplus and two hundred and fifty of free cash, we'll bring that balance to four point five million. Any questions? Hearing none, seeing none. Thank you. Okay, that will, I would then move to close the public hearing. The Finance Committee's public hearing of March ninth. The sub, subject is the school budgets and related. So I moved to close it. Second.
Second.
All right. Don't think we need it.